To the Lawrence Hill Run?
Yeah.
I was down here five thirty that morning. Long day.
There's supposed to be a...
So, I can tell our event is always Father's Day weekend. That just fell on top of me.
You were treating well.
Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call it order tonight, the Lawrenceburg Board of Works meeting for June seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. With a roll call, please.
Board of Works member Paul Seymour Jr.
Here.
Board of Works member Alan Callaway.
Here.
Police Chief Don Combs.
Here.
Fire Chief Johnny Tremaine.
Here.
EMS Director Rick Clark.
Here.
City Attorney Dell Weldon is absent. Assistant City Attorney Zach Anderson.
Here.
City Coordinator Brian Messmore.
Here.
President Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, I have no announcements for this meeting unless you all do. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Go move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry. Committee reports. Fire Chief Johnny Tremaine.
Oh, I have tonight. I had passed out a little description of our Saturday into Sunday and, I don't know, I must be getting sentimental in my older age and I felt like it is time I need to report to you all how proud firefighters made me this weekend. Just, they worked, I actually had three structure fires. They worked the weekend events, but from Saturday into Sunday, we worked, got called to Aurora, had a cooking fire in Lawrenceburg and then AM, we had to go to Greendale for a pretty significant fire. And I just want to let you all know that, you know, these guys come off the truck, they're ready to go to work, and they work until the fire's out. And I just want to report that to you and I put it in a little note to you all, so.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Doesn't go unnoticed. Okay, Police Chief. Donnie Combs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report to the board of our application process. We have eight, maybe one more has turned in today. We have a couple more weeks to accept them and then we're going to continue the process of the new officer. We have some really fine applicants coming in right now, so.
Good, okay.
That's all I have.
All right. EMS Director Rick Clark?
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to report that our new staff started Sunday night. Haven't had any problems since I took office that I'm aware of. Our run volume is up a little bit. You can see on the stats from April, so we're staying busy.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have no new business for this group tonight. If you guys got something to bring up? Old business, Mike Clark, Hardwood Ridge Ridge Full Depth Repair Change Order.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. On Hardwood Ridge, we had gone in and saw cut and do a full depth dig out in some areas before we mill and overlay it. And one thing I just want to make sure everyone's aware of too is, we were supposed to have a unit for this in the bid. It was omitted. And the engineer, because of their permission, have agreed to pay sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars of this amount.
Good.
Again, we did this design a year ago because of the community crossings. Things changed over the winter time, so there was a larger amount than what we originally indicated, but this has got the street now in good shape, so when we mill it and overlay it, we'll have something that'll last for a long time.
Any questions?
Hardwood Ridge is the road between Randy Avenue and the nursing home street there. Yeah, it's Randy Avenue.
Randy goes into Hardwood there, yeah.
It's Randy Avenue extended down to the Coliseum.
I heard if you didn't have to do in front of Randy Abner's house, that wouldn't have been no change order.
No comment.
Sorry, Randy. Just kidding. Just kidding. Okay, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change order.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And one item I do have to add tonight is the, we've been soliciting bids for the arch over Center Street, and we want to open those bids tonight. How many did we get?
Uh, we got two.
Two?
Yes.
All right.
And the first is from Double D Construction. And the amount for this is fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. The second is from Maxwell Construction. Their amount is sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. That being said, both are very capable and competent contractors. I would recommend that we go with Double D Construction for the low dollar amount of fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
And what exactly are we getting for that?
We've got some sidewalk curb and fence demo, and we're actually moving the entire structure, what, fifteen to twenty feet this way, so we don't have the problems with trucks cutting the corner. We're putting a full new foundation base in. We're actually elevating it about two feet higher than what it was before to make sure that some of the ornamental metal on the structure doesn't get caught by a box truck or something like that. And then there's restoration, putting sidewalk back curb and some of the section of the fence there on the corner of Arch Street apartment.
Okay.
Has it been worked out with the new house sitting there? You mentioned it's going back fifteen.
Well, it's coming this way. We are going to widen the sidewalk to get around it. Just to the property line, we do have a executed right of entry. In fact, that property owner is chomping at the bit to see it up in front of this new house.
Good. Okay, any other questions?
Clark, is Double D, is that a minority company?
No.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion then to accept the bid for fifty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars from Double D Construction for the Center Street Arch?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Okay. Any other old business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry and a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion will carry. Counsel, as soon as we're seated. Okay, I'd like to call it order, the City of Lawrenceburg Council meeting for June seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen. We all could rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a roll call, please, Mr. Andrews?
Counselperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Counselperson Aaron Cook is absent. Counselperson Mel Davis.
Here.
Counselperson Randy Abner.
Here.
Counselperson Paul Seymour Jr. Police Chief Don Combs.
Here.
Fire Chief Johnny Tremaine.
Here.
EMS Director Rick Clark.
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Zach Anderson.
Here.
City Coordinator Brian Messmore. City Court Judge Joe Johns.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Milan.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, announcements, anybody have anything on streets, alleys, or curbs?
No.
I got a question.
Yes.
More under parks, it's at the boat ramp. Question from Mike. Would it make any sense for us, we've spent all that money on dredging and we've got all that done and we just went through a pretty decent flood season last year and we've had a lot of runout, would it be smart of us to get that company to come back in here and resurvey the bottom of that creek to know whether it was worth our while doing that? How much, Mike, do you think that would cost us to do that?
I, we can do that. I would have to contact them, have them shoot us price on that.
I mean, I'd like to know that.
If it did any good?
That way we know if we waste, you know, if it's a waste of money in the future, that's all.
I know we can still access the ramps, the docks, everything without, without any issues. I think when we have fourteen feet right there, we're at the old dock and the new dock, we're close to twelve to thirteen feet around that float.
I'd like to see what one year did to it, because we did have a, I mean, can you get that information?
I'll try to get a cost and I'll report back at the next meeting, see what you guys want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Finance, Mr. Abbott?
We're fine.
Uh, do you have anything else on the parks and playgrounds? Paul?
Nope.
Uh, Fire, Randy Abner?
Yeah, just want to reiterate what Chief Tremaine about the excellent job the Fire Department had with all the, all the things they had going on through the weekend. They still took care of their job. And also, the host testing that's going to be coming up here very shortly, they got that going on, so just wanted to touch base with everybody on that, and that's about it.
All right. Okay, I've got two or three announcements here. We've been talking about putting this committee together for the Little Hill Park Playground, the big playground. So we're going to put something on on social media to ask for volunteers, for folks up there to, if they want to volunteer for, be on that committee to decide what kind of equipment. And then we'll do the same as we move through each of the parks. We're just, we did the small playground up there. Next will be the big, the large playground. We'll put that on Facebook and in social media and things like that. And then there will be an email for people to respond to if they want to be a part of that committee, and then we'll put a, put a meeting together. So, just wanted to announce that. We just found out that we, when I say "we," the City of Lawrenceburg, City of Aurora, City of Greendale, were awarded a six hundred thousand dollar Brownfield Grant. So that's a grant we've been going after for about three years. And if you're not familiar with that kind of a grant, it is for the evaluation of properties that have been, that may need cleaned up to become a piece of property that could be buildable. And this is, the six hundred thousand is for evaluation of these different properties. So that's a pretty, pretty nice sized grant for the area down here for us to get. The other thing is, before the July first meeting, we're going to need a, an executive session. At four thirty regarding pending litigation. So we'll get you guys, we'll get it posted and get you guys a memo out on that. And then I just wanted to say that many of you, as I look out, were down here this past weekend for the Taste of Summer event, which was a first year event, actually took place at the Regatta. The weather didn't cooperate fully, but I'll tell you, if you ask any of the twelve vendors that were selling food, they were excited about the turnout, even though it was not the best of days. So I think that'll be a great event to build on for next year. And so, thank you for all that attended that. We think it was a success, gauging it off of the vendors. I think that's all I've got on announcements. If no one else has anything else?
I've got a...
You go ahead.
I've got to make one announcement. The June third, two thousand and nineteen meeting, the Salary Ordinance Amendment was stated to be ordinance number seven dash two thousand and nineteen. That is actually going to be eight dash two thousand and nineteen. So just for the record, we want to note that that change has been made.
Okay, thank you. And Owen, do you have something?
Yes, Your Honor. If you would permit, myself and Moosh, we'd like to take the lectern.
While you're doing that, I'm going to go tell these folks out here. I would like to the record to state that the utility director is here, even though wasn't called on. We're going to let a short video play, and then I will get into the mutual aid and how this is relevant to the elected officials here this evening. A little volume there.
You can't hear that?
No.
Tim hears it just fine now.
And believe it or not, we did a drive run before everybody got in here tonight. Sorry, guys. I had volume when I tested it.
Mario, did you, did anything get changed with TVs?
Dave Snyder is our IT person in-house here.
It's a great video. Minus the sound. Moosh, you know a good fiber guy?
Comes out.
There we go. I do. It was on mute.
It was really hard, especially on my four-year-old, you know, he wants something cold, something fresh, and we kind of have to tell him, like, okay, son, you can get
I could not believe that people did not have power in today's day and age. I was not aware of it.
I didn't even know that people didn't have power in twenty nineteen United States. It's crazy.
I always thought everybody in the United States had power or had access, and I did not know they didn't out down here to Navajo Nation.
When I come back home, then I'm like, oh, yeah, I forgot I had no electricity, you know? You can't really have anything that's technology, you know, where you can just flip a switch, look at the news, you know. As it happens out there, I guess news comes right away and you know what's going on, but here you have to wait for, maybe wait before a newspaper comes out.
It was really hard, especially on my four-year-old, you know, when he wants something cold, something fresh, and we kind of have to tell him, like, okay, son, you can get it, but you have to eat it like right then and there.
I had to pack ice in the ice chest and put my food in there so it won't spoil and use it with the limited time before it gets bad or it gets bad in my throat.
I mean, we went to Hurricane Sandy and stuff, so that was also really amazing to do that. But goodness, to be able to do it for people who've never had power is, yeah, it's got to be number one.
It's just been a really good thing to see people finally get a life without waiting forever, it seems like. And it's just, it's a new feeling altogether. I don't explain it, what happened, you know, and it's just nice. And, you know, all of us linemen, linemen here, they wear all the gasses that come out, you know, we're just very proud to be able to help. I think I should say pretty much everybody, I want to say. I think the best, the best gift we can give is just, just give, just come down and help.
Should have done this a long time ago, probably. You know, there's a lot of, we see a lot of what's going on. We have some of our guys, my, my linemen, you know, Navajo gentlemen, and we have some other guys at work, and, you know, some of their family members are still out here without power.
It's a very good feeling, and to see the excitement on our faces, it's just, it's overwhelming and it's very heartwarming and it really makes you...
It was the first service we did. People had been waiting seventy-six years. Unfortunately, the man that was living there, he had died a month before we got there, so he never got to see it, but his daughter was there. She got real emotional, but we hit home, then we got their power for them.
There was a lady and she had three kids, two younger kids, and we brought her power. She never had power her whole life, in her forties, and then when we got her power, the first thing she said, she's like, I'm going to go grocery shopping for a week so she can keep the food cold. And then she got all teary-eyed and kind of me emotional. It was just, it's one of the best feelings I've ever had in my life, just when she could turn on that light switch. It was amazing. It's amazing.
Gosh, thank you guys so much. It was so much weight lifted off my shoulders, my husband's shoulders, and just to provide for our kids, it's a blessing. And I just want to thank you guys so much.
And it overwhelms my heart and all the people from all different places that are here to help me. And it is so mean, making me want to scream with happiness.
I am so grateful from the bottom of my heart. I can't believe, you know, this is truly a once in a lifetime opportunity for us, and we are so grateful and we will forever be grateful.
I went for my house and turned the switch on the other night as well. I was so happy and I just wanted to say, thank you, thank you very much.
God bless. Thank you. I've been waiting a long time. It's making me cry here in a little bit. It's making me cry.
So.
I'd say that deserves a big, big ovation. Thank you.
You know, every, every year we send crews, and even this year, we sent crews to Pendleton, Indiana to help restore power after they had some tornadoes touched down there. And I think everybody saw in the news, all of the homes that were without power up through Ohio and those areas. And so, we have signed a, a national, and we have for many years, a national mutual aid agreement with APPA that when, when member utilities, associate utilities are in trouble, we, we respond and we, and we provide service. And so, if you notice, there was only two communities out of the state of Indiana that participated, Scottsburg, Indiana and Lawrenceburg. We sent two guys in a truck. They were out there for approximately a week, and they, they were able to take power to a number of homes who have literally never had electricity at their house before. So when we lose power here in Lawrenceburg and, and people are calling me and texting me and wanting to know when's the power going to be back up, think about if you've never had electricity at your home ever in your lifetime. And the one house that Scott, Scott and Hammer talked about, they were just a couple of months shy of being able to provide power to that home before the individual that lived there for the past seventy years died. And so, this is something that transcends politics. This is something that speaks to the heart and the fabric of this community, that we have people who are willing to go and to provide service for those who are literally living in the poorest county in the United States of America. And that, and that we do that without, without much thought, that it's just something that we do automatically. And so, I, I give sincere thanks to this elected board, this administration, for being part of mutual aid and for being willing to provide service to, to those who can't provide for themselves, whether they're in Pendleton, Indiana, or in Kenta, Arizona. And so I thank you. I do think that it deserves a round of applause, and, and I appreciate it. And they have, they have sent a plaque to us, and I'd like to give this to the mayor. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Lawrenceburg City, Lawrenceburg, for your generous support of the two thousand and nineteen Light Up Navajo Pilot Project. The dispatcher electric line crews to the Navajo Nation helped connect two hundred and thirty-three families to the grid for the very first time. Again, that's two hundred and thirty-three homes that weren't just out of power, but have never had power ever in their lives. Raising the standard of life for many hundreds more. And then it, upon our sacred land, you've helped our families through the Light Up Navajo initiative. For your humanitarian efforts, we extend and express our deepest gratitudes. Okay, which is thank you in Navajo. Your community participation demonstrates the true American spirit of helping one another. Anyway, I'd like to present this to the mayor.
It's a demonstration. It may seem like, like a small deal, but it's, it's a big deal. I mean, it's, when we were out there for one of the planning meetings, a lady who had been about forty years without electricity... when we were out there for one of the planning meetings, um, a lady who had been about forty years without electricity, uh, when I asked her what the number one thing was that she was going to get out of the shed electricity in the fridge, and, and, and she was just grateful that she could be able to store food for more than just a couple of days at a time.
So while in, in, in the mid nineteen-fifties, the United States decided that rural electrification was, was a priority and went about the United States extending electrical services to most of the United States. For whatever reason, uh, an area about the size of Delaware was left out, and that was the Navajo Tribe. And so we've had people, eighteen to twenty thousand, uh, homes who have, who have relied on coal lanterns and coal fireplaces to heat their homes and, and children who worked by, by kerosene lanterns. So along with the lack of electricity, you get things of air quality. People who live in homes that are heated by coal have a much reduced air, air quality, uh, in their homes, and there's other health, health situations that go along with that. And most of those homes, if not all of those homes, don't have any running water. So any of you who have had young daughters at home, think about your daughters going through their, their life and having to deal with certain things that come with age without running water in the house. It's something that prohibits them from having the educational opportunities that we have, that we enjoy. And anyway, it's, it's a big deal. So thank you.
Thank you.
Who, who went out there for us, Owen? Scott?
Scott, Scott and Jay.
Scott and Jay? Okay. Yeah, we tend to take things, uh, for granted, that's for sure, and electricity is one that we, uh, we probably all do. And, uh, I know when, when the electric goes out, my phone starts going off. Everybody's wanting to know when's it gonna turn back on, right? And, uh, I obviously am, I'm texting Owen at that point and saying, "When's the, when's the electric gonna be back on?" But, uh, no, very good, very good stuff. Thank you, Owen.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion will carry. Committee reports. Fire Chief Johnny Tremaine?
I have no further report.
All right. Police Chief Don Combs?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just want the council to know that we are going to hold a K-9 seminar this year. Um, our offshore Jacob Jumparhead K-9 has put this together. It's gonna be September thirtieth through October the fourth, and this is gonna be at the fairgrounds. There's gonna be approximately thirty teams plus coming to this area, uh, while with their K-9s to do this training, and they're gonna get trained in patrol narcotics, explosives, and tracking. Uh, they can get certified, um, there. It's gonna be a week-long training. Um, and this is right after the, or, uh, yeah, right after Fall Fest, so some of them will probably come before and, and, uh, visit Fall Fest. Uh, they're gonna, um, stay at local hotels, obviously, eat at local restaurants, so this is gonna be a really good thing. Um, you know, that offshore jump is going to hold. Um, th- they're gonna have a lot of things, uh, at the fairgrounds, uh, and all over. Uh, the one particular night, we're gonna have a public safety night on October the second, and we want to have that at the, uh, new civic park. And I guess I'm asking for approval to use that civic park at that time, but I'm not sure if it's for this board, for the park board, to give the okay, but I wanna make sure that we, certain that we do get that civic park on that day so we can hold that. Um, they're gonna have some demonstrations there, a police car show, a lot of things for the kids. We'll have our K-9 trailer there. We'll have T-shirt, you know, giving out T-shirts and, and all this, and it'd be like a kids' day and a seminar day. All the dogs will be over at the civic park. So, uh, there, there's gonna be a lot of things, uh, coming. He's trying to get, uh, the face painting coming in here, cone of ice, uh, movie playing for the kids, um, just all kinds of things all day long for that day. So, um, if I can get some type of approval to, that we can have, I guess, first dibs on the civic park on that day, it'll be October the second.
Yeah, since it's a city-sponsored event, uh, it shouldn't be a problem to, we can put that on the calendar and it becomes a city-sanctioned event that way for the park.
Okay, yeah, October second.
Just get, get with Carrie and she'll put it, put on there and then it'll go on the calendar, and that way people in the public know as well.
Okay, very good. I have copies of what we're doing. I can give y'all a copy here, just kinda.
Is it face painting for kids or for you?
You could, anyone might do that, you never know. If there's any questions on that at all. Uh, the other thing I have, Mayor, is last week I got a call from, uh, Rick Carlton from the Legion. They are, uh, redoing Peggy the Horse, uh, fixing that up, and he told me about thirty, forty years ago or more, fifty years ago maybe, there was a shotgun that was given to the police department and it was in our display case for a long time. Now, since then, I took that display case out several years ago. We put everything down in our vault. Uh, we just didn't want it hanging out there. So he explained what the shotgun may have looked like, and I went down to the vault and it was there. And it was a, like a small sawed-off shotgun with two holes in the, in the, uh, stock where they attached it to Peggy. Um, you know, what they did back then, I don't know. They said that they drove Peggy around and they shot blanks in the air. I don't know. This was fifty years ago.
Not interested in that.
They want this shotgun back, um, and I don't have an issue with it. What we'll do is we'll disengage it where it won't fire. Um, they had no means of doing anything like that. I just wanna make sure it's good with the council that, and we'll all do it all the right way. I've met with the council already on this deal and, and he seems there's no problem with it. We'll have a, a form signed, whole harmless agreement and all the, to give that shotgun back to them after we disengage it where it can't fire. So just make sure.
Any questions up here? Any questions from you guys about that, doing that? Okay, doing that?
No, I'd be fine.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, and the last thing I have is I wanted to report back to the board. Um, I had mentioned the meeting before, that Officer Martini went to Los Angeles for the police and fire games, and, uh, he did bring home some medals. He brought home, uh, the individual bronze medal for the skeet shooting and, uh, the individual silver medal for a double skeet shooting. And, uh, he got several medals for, as team medals. So he did very well down there, represented our city very well, so.
Good.
And that's all my report.
Okay. EMS Director Rick Clark?
Thanks, Mayor. I submitted the monthly reports to everyone. If you have any questions, please ask. Otherwise, no issues or problems to report.
Okay, thank you. City Court Judge Joe Johns?
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, Lawrenceburg City Court has had two-hundred-and-eighty cases filed in the month of May with a total, uh, distribution of thirty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Uh, sixteen thousand dollars, or I'm sorry, sixteen thousand, twelve dollars and twenty-four cents was distributed to the city of Lawrenceburg. Uh, this brings our year-to-date case filings to one-thousand-four-and-sixteen dollars with our total amount collected and distributed, uh, two-hundred-and-two-thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. New business. Um, tonight we've got the, the honorable, let me see, how do I put this? I got, I, I met three, three, I got new, three new friends here. Um, what was it, about, uh, three weeks before school was out, I, I had gotten this, um, invite to go to St. Lawrence and listen to a presentation. And, um, it was quite a presentation, and after I sat there and went, they went through their slideshow, and these three individuals, these three fifth gr- now to be sixth graders, correct? Provided you all didn't get retained. But anyway, these three sixth graders now, um, had a civic project they wanted to do. And so I went and listened and they, they did their presentation and, and I said, "Well, maybe we can take this, uh, another step or two." So I'm gonna let them come up and introduce themselves. I believe they've got a, their slideshow with them. It doesn't take very long. They'll explain their project and then we'll do a little bit of explaining, uh, I'll let them explain and I'll add too, but, uh, what, how we're gonna take this forward and where you have an opportunity to participate. I mean, all of you out here can participate too. So y'all wanna come up to the podium and introduce yourselves?
I'm Jackson and, um, we were assigned a project and we wanna help trash on the highway, like close down Route Fifty for a day so we can, so like anybody can come and volunteer to just help pick up trash and make it a cleaner environment.
I'm Kayla.
And I'm Lucy.
Now you guys were a lot, a lot louder when I was in your classroom. Anyway, so we'll get this slideshow up and running, but, um, these three young people, um, have a great, uh, they, they've noticed that, that there's an issue here in the city, and they identified US Fifty as being a collector for trash. And, uh, I went and explained to them that US Fifty is not our street, but, um, we obviously care about what US Fifty looks like as well. But we also could maybe take it to NDOT after they do their event that we're gonna tell you about, and, uh, maybe put it back on NDOT to, you know what, if three fifth graders can identify that your, when I say your, I say NDOT's, highway needs cleaned up, maybe they need to do a little better job of identifying that themselves. So that's the whole goal of the project, is to make, make everybody aware of, of trash on the highway and, um, I'll let them explain the rest. Got it, Mish?
What's that?
No pressure. Guys didn't know you were coming to movie nights and now you could've, should've brought you guys some popcorn out there.
We already had.
Oh, did you get some, Gene?
The password's not there, I'm lying for some reason.
Why don't you three come up in front here and explain to you what's gonna, explain to these guys and everybody what's gonna go on this, uh, this Saturday?
Um, well, we assigned the date to pick up trash on the highway. So on June twenty-second at eight o'clock, we will be at,
Eight-thirty.
We will be at our school's parking lot, St. Lawrence's parking lot, and, um, we finished it to, you know, pick up trash. The recycling center provided all of the, uh, materials that we needed, grabber, trash bags, and food bags. Um, so we're closing down the street, um, for Route Fifty, so it's safe and anybody can come, it's open to the public. And, uh, you just need to, so you just need to RSVP to the city and, uh, it will last you two days.
And they also, they, they're being a little modest, but they, they designed their own logo, which you'll see, but they, so they could design their own T-shirt. So when you come and volunteer on Saturday, everybody's gonna have the same T-shirt on, correct? Okay? But also, we're not gonna shut down all of US Fifty at the same time. We, we've talked with Chief Combs and, and, uh, I don't think we had permission to do that, but, um, Chief Combs and Assistant Chief Snyder and, uh, we've got, uh, one of the city workers gonna drive a flatbed to throw the trash onto, the bags of trash. But we're gonna have police presence in front and behind, and we're not gonna be any further than the group that we got picking up, so it's gonna be very safe. Um, but like they said, we're gonna meet at eight-thirty, uh, in the back of St. Lawrence in their parking lot. We'll distribute the T-shirts, and then we are gonna go pick up trash from about nine to noon or however long it, it takes. If it takes less, then that's fine, and then we're gonna come back and, uh, eat a little pizza. So it's all yours, guys.
So I'll click for you. You good with that? All right.
Mr. Block, you might wanna introduce yourself.
Um, my name's Andy Block. I teach over at St. Lawrence School. I teach fourth and fifth grade math, social studies, and science. And, uh, these three individuals are superstars, so I think you're gonna see them shine right now. So I told them, "Don't let them see you sweat and have fun up there." Good luck, guys.
Help the highway with Jackson, Kayla, and Lucy. Table of contents. Help the highway. Our problem in our community is any trash on highways, especially that one. For our presentation, we will hear about how littering is harming the environment. Will you be able to help it and what are orderings made in this town? What is trash doing to the environment? If you go down a highway, chances are you will see a lot of trash. Animals who live in this area will think that this trash is food. The ASPCA says that moldy trash leads to animal poisoning. The animals will die from the trash. Animals can get their heads stuck in bottles like this one.
What does the wind do to trash on highways? If the wind is strong enough and the trash is light enough, the wind will carry it into a creek or river and then to the ocean, and it will affect the water we drink. The wind can also put trash into animals' habitats and make it think it is food and die from it. The website Ocean Today says that international littering and dumping is a big cause of marine pollution. How soon can you get the air? When you throw cigarettes out the window, they cause pollution. Number two, they can cause horse spiders. Number three, horse spiders can destroy animals' habitats and can also kill animals. Imagine that, imagine that you threw your cigarette butt out the window yesterday, then the next morning you turn on the news and there's a wildfire in your, in your town, and they say that it was caused by a cigarette butt. Then you remember that you threw a cigarette butt out the window yesterday. They say that it could kill a lot of animals on that side. Ways you can stop them. Number one, set up a day with your parents to go out and pick up trash. That was really close. Uh, just remember to stay out. Number two, if you see someone littering, tell them to stop. Number three, get involved with your neighborhood and pick up trash. And number four, another way you can help the highway and set up something to gain money and donate it to the Kayla, Lucy, and Jackson Highway. Steps you've taken so far. Number one, create a flyer to help spread information about our event. Uh, step two, write a newspaper for the, for the Gierborn County Register and contact the Gierborn County Recycling Center for supplies. Step four, design a T-shirt for volunteers. Step five, compare the radius speech to share on the local country on your radio. Step six, submit a report to the Lawrenceburg Announcement Board.
Thank you. So tomorrow morning, these superstars are gonna be on the radio at eight-forty with Bubba Bow, and then they're gonna ask you to sing as well, okay? Oh, you didn't wanna sing?
They could probably do that.
Yeah, but anyway, so, uh, they're gonna go on and, and, uh, ask for volunteers. And, uh, if anybody wants to volunteer, um, eight-thirty at St. Lawrence on Saturday morning. Rain or shine, we know it's not gonna rain, so it's gonna be shine, and, um, have a good time, uh, you know, go out and collect trash for a few hours, so. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, I have no other new business unless someone else up here does. Old business, I think it's, the ethics ordinance, since we've got one missing tonight, we probably oughta wait till the July 1st meeting to vote on that. So I would ask for a motion to table that. Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that'll be on the July 1st itinerary or agenda. Any other old business up here, guys? If not, entertain comments from the audience. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here on behalf of the company I work for, which is Center for Transportation Safety. We're an international company that provides safety for training for heavy and light duty. I'm not for sure if any of you guys follow the DWD program in the state of Indiana, which is workforce development. You know, we have built the largest CDL program through the Ivy Tech, and the number-one state provider now. And effective July 1st statewide, we lose all certification funding for any programs that are not accredited, not just CDL, but everything. There are some plans in effect now to hopefully assist, you know, with some federal assistance. But you know, there, it's been taking a couple years now to even get an accredited program developed. But I'm here to ask, my company would like to come in on August 5th from Delaware and Colorado, and the vice president of Ivy Tech, that's over manufacturing and workforce alignment, and talk to everyone if you would be interested in attempting to start up a scholarship program in this area. We've already got them built in Indianapolis, Terre Haute, Connersville, Fort Wayne's building theirs now. So we're here seeking, you know, to see if you guys would help us in southeast Indiana. But right now, I'm just kinda asking to see if we can get on the agenda for August 5th for the big team to come in and have a presentation.
You guys aren't operating at all like a 501(c)(3), do you?
No, we're all businesses like Ivy is. Yeah. I know Ivy does receive funding through, you know, the revenue sharing program. However, a lot of that's utilized for accredited programs only, and not certification, which is your HVAC, welding, CNA, CNNs, CDL. So a lot of folks that are low-income or unemployed are losing any chance to use any skill-up program funds.
This would be a presentation about jobs?
Yep.
For this area?
Yep. We are the number-one CDL provider statewide. We've been partnered with Ivy Tech now six years. We run a high 98, 99% first-time pass rate. Of every client that our facilities have trained. We are 100% job placement. CDL is one of the top five job needs in the state. And once you get a new doc here, you know, if you get your Riverside Ford, you guys will be in a predicament with training. There's already a shortage of over 350,000 drivers if you get to researching. They're estimating by 2024, as short as almost a half a million drivers. You're losing your entire baby boomer generation. So there's a, you know, offset of great need there. You know, Indiana is a huge manufacturing state, where your product's gotta get in, and your product's gotta get out. So, you know, they would like to come in and talk about a program, if you guys would be interested. But you know, I work with over 120-some companies just begging daily for drivers. And we have lots of clients that are interested in getting in this field, but some of them are at such a low wage, you know, or working a temp job at $10 an hour with no benefits, just barely making rent. You know, they can't afford to spend close to $5,000 to skill up on their own.
Okay. How long do you think the presentation would be?
With them?
Yeah.
Jim's short and sweet, if you want it short and sweet.
Well, I was just thinking if we need to do a...
Special meeting?
Special meeting?
I'd say 30 minutes to an hour. I mean, if you really wanna sit down and get into some strong details, actual training, fees, cost.
Maybe we could do that prior to the council meeting in August? That way, it gives you more time. You guys okay with us setting up that and just...
Or that meeting on the same day?
Yes. You know, we can set it up for 4:30 or something?
Okay.
Sounds good.
I would ask you to call Kelly Brookbank?
Yep.
And get on the agenda, and just tell her to put, or not on the agenda, I'm sorry. I'll tell you what, I'll take care of scheduling the meeting.
I'll give you my business card, Kelly. It's got my email.
All right.
Works, so...
Yeah, let's do that.
All right. Well, I appreciate it, everyone. Thank you kindly.
Okay, thank you. By the way, we have sent some folks to, we have sent some folks over to you all for CDL training, correct, Tina?
Please, I'm sorry.
We sent some of our folks to...
Yeah, they were first-time passers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, we do have a thing where, you know, we can't train one at a time.
Right, right.
You know, we have a limit, you know, we gotta have at least a group of three or four.
Yeah.
So, but you know, we run anywhere from 15 to 20 classes just here at Lawrenceburg. You know, right now, I'm averaging 50 to 100 a month. I'm never home, so...
Okay.
But thank you much.
Thank you. All right. Any other old business or comments from the audience? Okay, if not, I have a claim outside of the regular claims that got brought in today for Fall Fest. If you'd like, we can just include that when we approve all the claims. We can tell you it's for the 50% deposit for one of the entertainers for, it was either Friday or Saturday night. But the cost was $62,500. That's not on your claims. But I'd like to get that included with the claims if we could. Any questions regarding that? Okay, if not, then I'll approve, or ask for a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is that okay, Richard, to do it all in one, since we explained it that way?
Hey, you know, I'd rather have the entertainment as a separate motion if we could.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain, that motion carries. Let me ask for a motion to approve the Fall Fest claim?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, thank you. And ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Who wants to lead, right?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody.
Good. She did, so thank you very much.